... on YouTube, maybe I can say a joke or something.
All right. Thank you. So, so again, oh, I'm sorry, did you?
I was just gonna say, I know I just asked a question and we were supposed to only say comments, so I don't know how to rephrase it to be a comment, but you can send me an email.
We can get back, yeah, we will, we will get back to you. Absolutely.
And then, I guess I have another question, but I wanted to know if at some point we can start the talk about the word languages back in school. I know we haven't started the year, but I knew you knew it was coming from me, that I really wanna keep the kids with more word language. And I know there was, I think Mr. Sands and I were gonna start something about it, but I'm still not sure when that will happen. So, that was my last comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tim Chamberlain. 107 Dome. Yeah, remember to write it down for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. They seek to end debate with their names rather than start it. If you're not anti-racist, you're clearly racist. If you're not for Black Lives Matter, you're against black lives. If you're not pro-life, you're pro-death. It demagogues the opposition. You're espousing an open and honest debate in schools. And I believe that's an admirable thing. I think history should be taught, the good and the bad. I think all of us believe that history should be taught, both the good and the bad. But eliminating either one of those does injustice to our students. Given the verbiage that you're using, what's been said previously at this forum, that systemic racism is not debatable, and that if you're not proactively anti-racist, if you're not part of the solution, then you're part of the problem. Given what the papers, the first selectmen, the Human Rights Commission have been saying regarding all those who oppose both your premise and your solution, the civility that has been lacking the last month, do you think the students in your schools are more capable of handling these vast problems, of treating each other better than we treat each other? How can you ensure the safety and freedom of speech and the freedom of ideas of the kids who disagree with yourselves, when you yourself seek to shut it down by the verbs and the words and the arguments you use? When you only present one side of a debate, when you present Kendi and Margaret Hagerman and Robin DiAngelo and Lee Tittle, who supports all of those, and Dr. Seiler, they, they all feed one side of a debate? How do you expect an honest and open debate with everybody, including the minority views here in Guilford? The minority opinion counts. Those students have just as much right to an education as the liberal majority. Their side is unrepresented entirely in what you've given to your coaches, to your administration, and to your teachers. That concerns me greatly as a parent. I want to challenge you to make sure that both sides of the debate are represented, because so far they are not. Speaking of debate, my understanding is that there's a critical race theory forum tomorrow night. I believe you were in the background when, when the selectmen announced it. I'm not sure if that was a stock photo or if it was current. But so far, and I encourage that debate, I hope you all attend it, not debate forum. Because open and honest dialogue is the way forward for our town. I think it's a step in the right direction to be discussing what we mean when we say equity and social justice, rather than kinda-ish fighting about it. However, as a board, so far you've dismissed that CRT has anything to do with schools. And so, I'm curious, and I hope you give me an answer on this, is there enough overlap between the ideas that are going to be presented on CRT tomorrow and your focus on race in the schools that will be discussed tomorrow at a town forum will merit the parents' attention? Is it worth tuning in to see what's being taught at schools, or since that's separate, it's not worth it just as a concerned parent?
We'll have to wait.
No, 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 that will have to wait. I can't answer that. I just want to make clear that, that what is being presented tomorrow is being presented by the Guilford Human Rights Commission. It is not being presented by Guilford Public Schools. We are not connected with that presentation, so that's what I want to make clear.
The reason I ask is because the newspaper had Superintendent Freeman standing behind the super, the selectmen as he made the announcement.
That was a stock photo.
That was a stock photo. That was not Mr. Hovey's announcement of the event.
Great, that's why I want to know, as far as that goes. As a parent, will I be learning about what's going on in schools if I attend that event?
It's not our event.
Hi. My name's Clarissa Sohada. I am one of the founding members of the GHRC. So, yes, that is our event. We are having it tomorrow. It is an educational event that, you know, we saw the need to it from the community, and so we decided to have the Honorable Angela Robinson come back. She is a professor-
Sorry, can I just enter, just, can you just tell us your address for, just for the, sorry, we're asking everyone, I have to ask you too.
I know, it's just, it's, you know, given the rhetoric here, it's, it's really uncomfortable for a person of color. I, I, I'm on, I, I, I am concerned about my family's safety.
Okay, then I'm, I'm gonna just ask you then to just continue your comments, please.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, so, you know, she's a retired judge, and she is a professor at Quinnipiac University. She teaches a course in CRT. She gave us a brief overview. She's, she was willing to come back despite the threat that somebody in the 96% of Guilford emailed to her. And she is just gonna give a more in-depth explanation of what CRT is. We encourage everybody to attend, and she will be willing to answer questions through the Zoom webinar format, so that's that. I'm gonna put on my, my mom hat now, because I'm here now as a parent. You know, it's, the one thing, or, you know, I think, one of the things that we can agree on is Martin Luther King Jr. was a great person. I have seen both sides talk about, you know, his philosophy, his ideology, his teachings, you know, and, and, yes, we all want our children to be judged based on the content of their character and not the color of their skin. So I would like to make a suggestion to the Board of Ed, and if doesn't apply here, I'll take it to the GHRC. But the King Center in Atlanta, Georgia, has a pledge that is the Be Love Pledge, and they have an adult version and they have a youth version. And I think since everybody embraces Dr. King's teachings, I think it'd be something very beneficial to, to have us do as a community, as an example for our kids, and maybe even have them do it at, you know, during the Martin Luther King Day holiday, I think. I mean, it's a simple pledge. I don't think it'd be indoctrinating anybody with a pledge, so I think that is just an option. I'll leave this here, it's just the printout of the wording of that. What else can I say? And so, I, I just wanna give, like, just, you know, I, the other thing I wanted to say is that I've always admired all of your commitment to do better when you know better. And something that Professor Robinson taught us at the GHRC is the importance to acknowledge stolen land. So I want to take a moment to recognize that, no matter how long any of us have been in Guilford, the original protectors here are the Menokotunk people. And I, and I want to applaud the collaboration that you guys have had as a Board of Ed. You know, up to this point, you have taken fact and data into account when making decisions that affect our community, and there have been many, 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 many different emotionally-charged decisions that you've made, from class sizes to the late school start, to the bus routes, to extra time for special, to, you know, the turf on the football field, there's, it's just like, it's amazing that you have been able to find that working relationship. And it's good, and this is what we want. We don't, we don't want more divisiveness.
I'm, I'm, I'm so sorry, you're, you're coming to your four minutes, and I do want to give other people a chance to talk, so I'm gonna ask you to-
I can come back later.
Thank you.
So, yeah, and I mean, and more specifically, more recently, of course, with the mascot decision and the, the precautions with COVID, like, I, I was extremely stressed out with having a newborn at home and, you know, worrying with my kids coming home with the flu or much worse COVID, and, you know, thankfully, because everything had never happened, like, Leet did really well.
Thank you. Again, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up. Thank you.
That is, that is it.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi. Let me sign my name first. I feel like I'm under all this pressure, I'm not writing fast enough.
We could probably put that aside and let you speak and sign afterwards, that might be more efficient.
Maybe I'll do that. Hi, I'm Barb Hargraves, and I live at 204 Landon's Way. I have two children who are both somehow gonna be up here at the high school this year. I have no idea where the time went, but I am here tonight because I just wanted to say that I am in full support of the social justice and the racial equity programs that we're doing here in Guilford Public Schools. My youngest daughter just finished up at Adams, shout out to Adams. Hey, hi. They, they, I don't know how many people are aware of this, if you don't have children in the schools, they have a program at Adams, the Witness Stones, the Witness Stones Project, and a former teacher, he was a teacher at Adams when he brought the program to the schools. This is the kind of program that I feel that we need to encourage more of. We had more conversations this year, I think it was because we were able to watch the presentation on Zoom, it was made available, so I could see it, I haven't always been able to go. And the conversations that we had in that program, in my own family, was just incredible. We had, I really feel that, that what that program did is it really allowed my kids to connect with one story of an enslaved individual who was here. Somebody else mentioned it tonight, that they didn't realize that we had enslaved people up here, it wasn't just in the South. Truthfully, when I was in high school, I didn't see it as that either, I was like, well, that's their problem. That's not our problem up here, because we're in the North. So I feel that our schools are doing such an excellent job in teaching our kids the full experience. And there's an expression, I mix these up all the time, so I'll apologize in advance, you can't know somebody else's experiences unless you've walked a mile in their shoes. And I feel that this is what the Guilford Public Schools is trying to do. We're trying to show our kids through education, through curriculum, that their experience is not everybody's experience, and that you need to be able to fully understand what the other experiences are, so that you can learn from each other, and so that we can really get to an acceptance and move forward. So I, I, I'm here just to say, I support this. I'd like to see more programs like this, and I fully support what's going on. I, I also think that there's a lot of misinformation in the community right now. As a parent, I, I see a lot of what's going on with my kids, they don't tell me everything, that's as it should be, but, but I feel like I, I, the communication coming from the district is excellent. I mean, I get emails saying, hey, is it okay for your child to watch this movie that we may or may not be showing, you know, at the, some of the schools, for whatever reason. We get so much communication. I trust the administrators, the teachers, the staff in the buildings to be presenting, you know, this education and trying to help our children understand the different experiences out there. So I would just encourage, you know, the Board of Ed members and Dr. Freeman and the rest of the administration, just keep pushing forth the information of what is actually happening. I appreciate it. And just to the Board of Ed, I want to say to you guys, I am fully in awe of everything you guys do, the amount of respect that you show everybody here at these meetings is incredible. And I have been coming to these meetings fairly regularly over the last six or seven years. I have never, ever once seen this as a political body. I've always seen you all, and I know that the members have changed and moved in and out, but I've never seen you as being anything other than focused on our kids and focused on getting the best education for our kids and bringing in top-quality talent. So thank you very much for that, and that's it.
Thank you.
After you're done, you can sign. After you're done, you can sign.
And then you can sign later.
Yeah.
That's a lot of people. Bob Harrington, 464 Granite Road. I have an eight-year-old at AW Cox, and in a couple years I got another kid who's gonna be going there soon. And I hope, it's obvious that I am a white man, that my wife is neither of those two things. And so through her eyes and through the eyes of my in-laws, I have personally seen the reasons why we need the equity and social justice initiatives that the Board of Ed has put forward. I have personal experience as to the things that affect her and my mother-in-law and my sister-in-law, and one day soon, I hope, won't affect my children. We were recently at a local Guilford event, and I was shocked to hear somebody nearby shout, hey, whatever the name was, to a friend of theirs, white power, am I right? I am grateful that neither my children nor my wife heard, but we were right next to them. And it just points out why we need all the work that you have been doing, and, and how much ineffective some of it has been, and how we need more. It's not a thing growing up, I grew up in Clinton, you know, a couple towns over, it's not a thing that I have ever thought would affect me as deeply as it has, but I can't, I can't help but see what my family goes through, and know that a lot of it that I'm insulated from. It's hard, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, is this on?
Yeah.
I'll speak, I speak loud, so my wife always tells me I'm yelling, so I'm gonna speak loud so the back of the room can hear me, but I don't mean to, I don't mean to be yelling, because that's not what I'm here for. My name is Sam Han, I'm a resident at 57 Cambridge Way in Guilford, and I wanted to address some of the comments that were made, you know, it's not really about sides, but throughout the evening. The first one is that absolutely I disagree with the comment made earlier that morality should not be taught by the schools. I think we all know what happens to societies when that's taken out. You know, one of the things that we are very good as humans is ignoring the past, and that's why we end up repeating it so often. Morality is absolutely something, I think we probably all agree, that needs to be taught in the schools, and it's really not just only up to the schools, but it's a partnership between the schools and the parents. And, you know, I think we could all agree here that one of the things that we all want is our children to be better than us, that our children become more advanced, they become better human beings, in whatever way you want to define that. And one way for that to happen is for them to be in a school system among peers, among educators, in a system that promotes open thought, open-mindedness, and tolerance. You know, I just want to share a quick little snippet, something humorous, but is absolutely indicative of why I think discussions like this are very critical. Some of you may have seen, you know, it was a big, I don't know if you want to call it viral, but the whole Matt Damon thing, right, with his use of the F slur. If you haven't read about it, you should, it's generated comments on both sides, but basically, Matt Damon, you know, he's about my age, I think I'm a little older than he is, but I think he's a pretty cool guy, and he posted this thing where he said that, you know, in kind of colloquial talk, he was using the F-word. And his daughter basically educated him, that say, hey, look, Dad, you know what, that may have been okay when you were a child, when you were growing up as a teenager, which it was for me also, it was kind of this thing that you just kind of said, you know, F, you know, this person's F, this, whatever, but, you know, now it's really not really acceptable, socially acceptable. And she had a nice debate with him about that, and he basically said, you know what, I am really respectful of my daughter because she educated me, and she was able to change how I felt about that word, and now I've retired it, I'm not using it anymore. Now, that may be an extreme example, and it's somewhat of a small example, but it's, I think, how we all can learn as a community, and I am grateful to the Board of Education for attempting to do these sorts of things. It is difficult work, and I anticipate, you know, further conflict going, coming down the road, because, you know, that's how things get solved. You know, I do not want the Board of Education to be all unified all the time and be unanimous with all their decisions. You know, that's, we, we need you to have honest, open discussions, you know, because you are our representatives, and we're very appreciative of that. And the fact that the Board of Ed body is, is what it is, I think is fantastic, but again, the, the issue here, I think, is more an issue of tolerance, an issue of open-mindedness, and issue of morality, quite frankly. I think that's a great way of phrasing it. And I know I'm not supposed to bring up elections, but at the same time, the only way that this is gonna change is in an election, so I encourage everybody here to look at what the elections are coming up for both the primary and the general election, and, you know, to basically hold your hearts.
Excuse me, yeah, we, I'm so sorry, we really can't talk about elections here. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Unless you have a health, would you like me to leave? I have a health issue, I cannot wear a mask, I'd like to make a statement. Would the Board like me to leave?
You can, you can keep your mask off when you're speaking.
I can keep my mask off when I'm speaking.
While you're speaking at the podium.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Danielle Scarpolino. The paper that's supposed to be here isn't here right now, but I live at 405 Andrew Lane, Guilford, Connecticut, and I want to thank the Board again for allowing me to speak. I won't take long, I just want to touch upon tolerance and inclusion and all the fancy buzzwords that we're all using, that I believe in, and I really would like an answer, and you don't have to give it to me tonight, but I really would like a response from everybody, because this is a sincere question. So the petition that was signed tonight, it made it across my desk as well, unfortunately not in the manner that it was received by all of you. I have some parents sending me emails because they know I'm very vocal, and they're asking for my help. So I am not a Board member, you are, so I'm gonna present to you what was presented to me. Children are receiving this petition that's going around, they're receiving it through their own means of communication. I have three children, all three of my children received this petition, but they didn't receive it to sign. What they received and what these other parents told me their children received were screenshots of the Truth in Education website, and typed over it by a child, this is what the racist white FUC trying to take over the BOE believe in, because apparently white children are taught to feel bad about being white. The next one, a screenshot of the petition. BOE meeting is at 7:30 on Monday. If you haven't taken the time to understand what's happening, if Scarpolino and the crazy F Republican candidates win the election, they can fire Dr. Freeman, our principal, and completely change our curriculum so that essentially white kids are favored and we don't learn about race and equality. This has been my concern since day one. Never has it been my concern that we don't teach history, that we don't teach about race, that we don't teach about real racism that does exist. The choices you made in teaching this is the mistake. This is going to divide our town. These are the children talking, these are the children communicating. You're not gonna see these quotes and these comments on your petition, you're not gonna see it, but our children are gonna hear it, and they're gonna see it, and they're gonna live it. So it's either you agree with what the Board is doing and with what Dr. Freeman is pushing forth, or you are a racist. I have been trying to say this since October of 2020, no one would listen. I'm asking you, please, listen, please, for the sake of all of our children, our black children, our white children, our whatever, because not everyone, even black Americans are not on board with this direction, and you seem to not want to hear that. People are speaking, and there is a silent majority that I keep reminding you about. They're hiding, they're in hiding, because you know what happens when they speak out? They get called a racist, like I do. They get their business boycotted, like I am. You get teachers, some of them are in here, that agree with the boycott of my business. My daughter has that teacher next year. How is that gonna be handled? This is a mess in Guilford, and this is not made up. And if you don't want to believe it, time will tell, history will tell. And I'm sorry that I have to be so aggressive, I really am. I know everyone here is doing what they think is right, everybody is. We all are doing what we think is right, but the difference is, we are literally being called ra, that's like being called a mer, it's the worst thing you can be called.
We can't have comments from the audience, please.
The audience, the audience needs to-
We can't, excuse me.
Being a racist is not bad, in my opinion, if you're a racist, you're a drag of society. It's the worst thing you can be.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna ask you, these are comments to the Board of Ed?
I'm sorry, the applause just-
No, 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 I just want to refocus.
And the truth of the matter is, I, I'm, I'm a Republican nominee, I don't know if-
We're not talking about the election, please.
I don't, I, I would be open, more open than the people in front of me-
The audience, please, needs to be quiet.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, Dr. Freeman, thank you, because I know people see us as adversaries, and I'm not an adversary. see us as adversaries, and I'm not an adversary, I've never been, I've been trying to make it, make everything exposed, because people see it the way I see it, they're just not going to tell you, they're not going to tell you, and you're going to self-censor these children, you will self-censor them.
I'm gonna ask you, your time is up, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you for hearing.
My name is Colby Ortiz, and I'm a rising senior at GHS, I live at 1491 West Street. I often hear the phrase, you won't live in Guilford forever, there's a whole world out there, and it's the role of educators to prepare us to be compassionate and understanding citizens of the world. We must be prepared to work in new environments with different types of people, and a curriculum that teaches whitewashed history wouldn't prepare us with the skills we need to thrive in the world. Some of the people in this community want to teach students that racism doesn't exist in our current society, it's simply a thing of the past, like slavery and Jim Crow laws. In truth, those, those things are not just the past, but affect our present, and acknowledging the past and current flaws of our country is not unpatriotic or anti-American. Denying systemic racism for white comfort is what is anti-American. It's our commitment to racial justice work that makes us strong and characterizes American spirit, and if the truth makes you uncomfortable, that doesn't give you a past to deny it. Education is not meant to solely serve the interests of white students by lying about our nation's history and ignoring the issues that our nation faces today. Education is not meant to make white students feel comfortable at the expense of black students or other non-white kids. By using school as an environment to create greater cultural awareness and inclusion, we help students with different backgrounds succeed. A diverse curriculum fosters acceptance and helps prepare students to thrive, especially in a time when teaching young people about racial relations throughout history and in the present is so important. By teaching young white kids to be colorblind, which is trying to be pushed right now, you teach them to ignore a cultural reality that leaves them ill-equipped to make sense of the conflicts and disparities they may see. They may fail to recognize that people come from all different backgrounds and experiences, and lack the ability to be culturally sensitive to those different contexts. This colorblind approach negatively impacts our move for equality and leaves people unable to see discrimination. The colorblind teaching approach only fails our students and makes them unprepared to be mindful citizens of the world. It forces non-white children to deal with an environment in which the harm they experience is not seen. We have to do better than fostering ignorance. I am so proud of the progress we made this past year, from the mascot change to finally having a change of narrative in history classes through learning about Native American and Black pillars in American history, it was clear that Guilford was striving for more diverse and accountable approach to learning. I say we don't let that progress be reversed, I say we continue to be culturally responsive. There's always going to be people that stand in the way of positive change out of fear, no matter what it is. They use the way they were taught in school to justify continued teaching that way. What we can't do is cater to that fear. In doing so, we let people with outdated mindsets and divisive rhetoric take the stage. I'm proud of these members of the Board of Education who've dedicated time, especially this past year, to creating more inclusive and an anti-racist school environment. Please continue down that path. Thank you for showing students like myself what real leadership is and what it means to fight for what's right, even in the face of indifference. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Amanda Harvonic of 123 Stoneboat Road. So first, I want to say that I'm in full support of the Board of Ed and your efforts to ensure that students are receiving a quality and inclusive education, but that's not the direct focus of my comments tonight, so thank you for everything that you do for our students on all accounts. I know that this last year was really tough for everyone in the school district. The principals and the teachers went above and beyond to ensure that kids like my son were both safe and had a positive learning environment. So I thank you for taking the safety of our students into account as we begin this new, yet still challenging, school year. As mentioned tonight, masks are one of the best ways that we can keep our kids in school and in person, so I implore you to keep, to continue keeping best practice in mind, listening to the AAP and other leading medical organizations. With kids of my own that are too young to be vaccinated, I know that they could be one of those positive cases that we mentioned tonight, in the schools and in the community. And we also need to know and be aware of the fact that kids with disabilities or kids with health conditions that make them higher risk are particularly vulnerable in these situations. And I do say all this knowing that everyone here wants to take steps to limit those cases, because while kids seem to have better outcomes than a lot of demographics, we also know that there's children's hospitals that are currently filling up in some regions of our country, so we don't fully understand the long-term health impacts of this either. So I'm here to implore the Board of Ed to both advocate for and prioritize health recommendations, even in the absence of state, or statewide, or larger government regulations. We know that the presence or the absence of those mandates does not determine safe or best practice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the Board of Ed this evening?
I'll come back.
I, I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure that, is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet who would like to speak? I would like to make sure we prioritize. Oh, okay, come on up, please.
I don't have a speech prepared. Do I have to sign something?
First, you can speak first, yep, sorry.
My name is Jill Paglino, I live at 48 Canary Court. I don't have a speech prepared, and the person I was going to talk to has left already, but I've been sort of thinking why the people who oppose the CRT are so upset, and I, and I've been trying to figure it out, and I don't think they're necessarily racist, but I think they're worried that their kids are going to be sad to learn about what's happened in this country. That's the best I can figure out, is that their kids will learn facts about American history and they'll become sad, and you know what, that would be an appropriate response to learning what happened in this country and what's still happening, it's an appropriate response to be sad. And your kids may be sad when they learn about some of this stuff, and that's okay, we're not going to tell them, and it's your fault, you know, you did these things, because they didn't do any of these things. So I don't know if they're trying to protect their kids from having a moment of discomfort, but I just want to say that I'm okay with my kids learning history as it happened and not as we wish it had happened, and if my kids are sad, then they can come home and talk to me about it, and I can be like, yeah, that was really awful, the way that went down. So, anyway, I support you and thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kendall Svangelis, I live at 3 Rockland Road in Guilford. A lot has been said this evening, it's very interesting, and I, I find myself in an interesting position because I, I come from the background of someone who grew up in a majority-black city, Gary, Indiana, which is now about 93% black. My classmates were, many of my classmates were black, we, we engaged in all kinds of activities together, I had great relationships growing up. I've written a history of Gary, Indiana, I've also written two vocabulary-building novels that are directed at minority youth in particular, that teach vocabulary and cultural literacy. What concerns me is the politicization of education, and I don't want to see one side presented, because it's very nuanced, and that's one thing we're missing. I support the complete teaching of history, all, all of it, good and bad, and we homeschool my granddaughter, and we talk about all this, we talked about slavery, she's read biographies of Frederick Douglass, and Harriet Tubman, and Curtis Washington, and Martin Luther King, we go over all of that. I want her to know the full history of it, but I don't want education to be one-sided. I, what upset me was when I learned about the purchase of Ibram Kendi's book, and books by Robin DiAngelo, to the exclusion of other very thoughtful thinkers on the other side, on the right. Shelby Steele, who wrote a great book called White Guilt, How Blacks and White Liberals Destroyed the Civil Rights Revolution. It's a very poignant and thoughtful book, and what we don't understand is that there has developed, since the Civil Rights Revolution, a divide between those that supported Dr. King's vision and those that wanted, as Shelby Steele points out, wanted to use race and white guilt as a way of extracting more from white society. And the downside of that is that it creates a sense of victimhood among blacks which is not productive to their success, and that's one of the things that bothers me. That's why I'm a supporter of the Woodson Foundation, which Robert Woodson has been working in inner cities for years, supporting inner-city youth who are, grow up in broken homes, those that come out of prisons, and tries, tries to help them rehabilitate them and get them back into society. And he's totally opposed to CRT, and he just put out a great book dealing with that by 20 scholars. And there are a lot of downsides to CRT and its progeny, but the thing that concerns me is that this may not be presented, both sides are not being presented within the school system, and to buy those two books to the exclusion of the others sends a message to the faculty that is not appropriate. They should be hearing both sides, they should be reading books by Thomas Sowell, and Walter Williams, and Glenn Lowry at Brown, who's a brilliant economist and social critic, John McWhorter, you can watch them on YouTube. These are the kind of people you should also be listening to, because it's a very nuanced and complex problem. We also have to recognize that these people like Woodson are dealing with the fact that because of the Great Society and something that we should be teaching in, in schools is what happened after the Great Society legislation, welfare legislation was passed. The thing you have to understand is that from the, the late 19th century until the 19, early 1960s, black illegitimacy was actually lower than white illegitimacy, most people don't know that. It, it has been described as the greatest advance by any group in history, is what blacks did from the post-Civil War period until the 1960s, the advances they made despite racism, overt racism.
I'm, I'm so sorry, you're coming to your four minutes, so I'm just going to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Okay, and just to say, I would like to see, and I was going to bring, just bring attention to the fact that there are ethical guidelines promulgated, regulatory guidelines promulgated by the state of Connecticut, that specifically require that both sides be presented, and I have some copies that I can present to you after this, and it's a, it's a part of the education environment in Connecticut that both sides should be presented, and I want to make sure that a nuanced, detailed history is available to students and that those that hold opposing views, they're not racist, they just have a different view of the best path forward for minorities.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead, someone in the back? Whoops, okay, okay, thank you, sorry.
Hi, Stool Golden, 645 Tanner Marsh Road. So I wanted to comment on that, that in our country, there are now more than both sides, there is Republican, Democrats, Independents, Greens, and Socialists, and I would agree with you that there is a lot of nuance in our country. And as someone who grew up in a school system that was diverse, yet embraced colorblindness, or a colorblind way of approaching speaking about race, I feel like it wasn't enough. I mean, and, and I also grew up in a Republican household, my parents are Republicans and They, as an eight-year-old, I was taught by the church to teach the whole congregation about the humiliation of Christ, and so I think children can handle complex subjects, and I would have to agree with the man in scrubs who spoke about how we should be teaching morality in schools. And I just wanted to lift up this last, since we can all agree to read Martin Luther King Jr., I wanted to lift up this last book that I'm reading and invite you all to read this. I read the chapter entitled, sorry, Racism and the White Backlash recently, and some of the quotes that stood out from this book are, "The tendency of the nation to take one step forward on the question of racial justice and then to take one step backward is still the pattern." And then he goes on, and he ends the chapter in a hopeful tone, and he says, "The value in pulling racism out of its obscurity and stripping it of its rationalizations lies in the confidence that it can be changed. To live with the pretense that racism is a doctrine of a very few is to disarm us in fighting it frontally as a scientifically unsound, morally repugnant, and socially destructive."
Oh, wait, have we heard?
David Mulilla, 135 Mary Lane, I'm sorry to be here again.
I just want to make sure, David, thank you so much, I just want to make sure that people who haven't spoken have had a chance to speak. Do you mind if we just, I'm sorry? And then, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
My name's Tyler Aggett, 274 Church Street, I just wanted to come up here, I actually made the mistake of going on Facebook a couple days ago, and I saw that there's going to be an anti-mask protest here, so I came here as a anti, anti-mask protest. I just wanted to say thank you for all the guidance you did in 2020, and for being conservative in reopening and making sure the mask mandate stays in schools, and to be pro-vaccination. And I just wanted to put my voice out to say that if you're inclined to be conservative on reopening, I would definitely be supporting that, so I just want to put that quick word in there, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Is, is there anyone else who has not yet spoken who would like an opportunity to speak? All right, hearing none, thank you, sorry, David, thank you.
I'm still David Mulilla? I just, just briefly, I keep hearing CRT thrown around, my understanding, there is no CRT being taught, I mean, it's not even something that is taught on a public school level, and people want to keep hanging on to that. What we're talking is about history that shows that, the full scale of, of our history, good and bad, and there is no CRT. And though I disagree profoundly, the people whose kids are getting picked on, we should extend ourselves to help those kids if they're being harassed or bullied, and all our kids can use to be, you know, a little more tolerant, sometimes the woke stuff gets a little intense, especially on social media, so I, I think we do need to watch out for that, and otherwise, if there is no CRT, we're going ahead with something that's progressive, and if you're in a minority and that's been shown to you time and time again, eventually you got to say, oh, I'm just not accepting what the majority want, and demanding my way, and I would hope that would be the end of it.
Thank you. Did you, oh, you wanted to come up again?
Yeah, I wanted to come up again. I mean, I think it's important to say, you know, the thing about Facebook is, the, the other thing about you guys is that, you know, I've never seen you guys on Facebook bullying any member of the community, and that is something that I have seen from Danielle, who, who was here, and it's, it's...
I'm going to ask that we not focus on individuals, but again, focus on content of the Board of Ed or schools.
She did point out the, the, the petition, the screenshots that were sent out to the youth and... She did point out the petition, the screenshots that were sent out to the youth and how the youth were writing out different things. The thing she failed to mention was that the screenshot was of the, had a quote of Hitler, you know, and on their "Truth of Education" sign. And so, I mean, that's just where I draw the line, you know? You talk about transparency, you got to own up to what you put out. So again, I'm not trying to sound anti-white. I'm not. I've lived in a lot of predominantly white neighborhoods, you know? But, you know, before coming to Guilford, I was in Charlottesville, Virginia. And there is a lot of similarities between Guilford and Charlottesville.
Wow.
It's a very nice, small town. It has a nice downtown area. A lot of the people go to work at a major university. And it's just, it's, you know, it's just getting that vibe again about, you know, the sort of stuff that happened there. And it's not, it's not, it's not something I want to see. It's not something that is safe for anybody to do. You know, when we talk about teaching our kids, we want some inclusion, we want some true history, like Ruby, Ruby Bridges, I apologize. You know, we want representation, showing people that are from other countries, from authors, from different points of view. When, when the PTO had a, you know, multicultural day, I was, I was willing to share my culture with my son's classroom. I, I set up a Zoom call while the kids were there in the classroom with relatives in Brazil. I exposed them to culture, to things outside the world. They asked silly questions, like, "Do you have a refrigerator?" But you know what? It's something that they, they didn't know. Like, you just don't understand what the culture is outside of Guilford. And there is just so much more. And, you know, it's also, my aunt and her partner were the ones just showing different tropical fruits, like the avocado you got there, I mean, puts the ones here in shape. So it's just, it's just like, and it's, and it's infuriating, because there has been so much hate crime going up. And my kids are multicultural. They are biracial. They are multilingual. And there is no place for candidates to sit on the Board of Education-
Again, we cannot talk about politics, please.
Right. Well, there's no place where quoting Hitler is acceptable. And that's all.
All right, thank you. Transparency.
Hi, Darby Long. I just want to comment, I heard a lot of people mentioning, like, both sides. And there's a lot of things that have different sides, but education is about teaching the truth. We don't teach the Flat Earth theory over, you know, like, the Round Earth theory that's supported by science. And we don't, you know, teach creationism over evolution. And history shouldn't be any different. So I completely support what the Board of Education is doing and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board of Ed before we adjourn? All right. Thank you. No, 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 we do, the Board of Ed does still have, that's right, we still have an executive session. So that's right, we still have an executive. I want to thank all the public for showing up. I want to acknowledge that there are folks tonight who had questions that we did not answer at this time in order to give people time to speak. We will get back to on these questions. We are recording everything that people have asked us. We understand that there are people who have questions, all kinds of questions about what's going on, but certainly about the Equity and Social Justice Initiative. Again, there is a Q and A on the Guilford Public Schools website that has answers to questions we've already heard. You can reach out to the administration, you can reach out to any of the Board of Ed members. We try to get back to people in a timely manner, although I will readily admit that sometimes my inbox gets so full, I get behind. But we want people to know what we are doing. I think we feel like we spend a lot of time telling people what we're not doing in Guilford Public Schools. We are happy to talk about what we're doing and happy to say that there's a lot still that hasn't been done. This is an initiative that has only just begun and that a lot of what's been going on in Guilford Public Schools has actually been going on for some time and is not new. But we are happy to talk about it, happy to answer questions, happy to communicate to people who have those questions. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your involvement and your engagement. I am going to, because the Board of Ed still has an executive session, I'm going to identify that when we come out of the executive session, there will be no votes, there will be no more action taken by the Board of Ed except to adjourn. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to enter executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we will now go into executive session.